Thank you. Welcome back to the Tuesday, December 14th, 2021 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. We will be moving item 25 ahead of item 24, informational item, administrative office. Receive an update on strategic planning from Municipal Resources Group, Robert Bendorf. It's not Robbie, it's Robert.
Fantastic. All right. Well, thank you very much for having me, Chairman and members of the board, Robert Bendorf. Hold on a second.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We like everyone to hear what you have to say.
The red light, when the red light comes on, you're pushing the right button.
There you go.
That's good. Yeah. I've been out of the game too long, so. Again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Robert Bendorf County, or working for the so working with you here in Calaveras on behalf of Municipal Resource Group and efforts in strategic planning. So before I start, I wanted to just give you an idea a little bit about what's been happening, and the presentation is fairly short this morning. But it's something that I recite often as we go into the throes of strategic planning in different organizations. And I just thought I would just maybe set the stage a little bit of maybe what's to come. So this came from an excerpt of a letter, and it's a board and CEO communicating. It says, "To inspire people to follow you, to commit themselves to your endeavor, to make needed sacrifices, you have to offer an inspiring mission. It doesn't need to be dramatic, but it does need to be meaningful. I think restoring sound, strategic decision-making that looks beyond tomorrow's report will take us a long way toward a mission we can all be proud of. The results will take care of themselves." Reason I tell you that is I'm a big believer that the strategic planning efforts, or any type of planning efforts for the most part, in local government is not just about the board of supervisors, your administrator, your department heads, but it really is the whole. And that is all the folks here that are providing a variety of services to your constituents. And then it's also your stakeholders, too. And depending on how counties want to begin their strategic planning effort, whether it is with an inward-facing focus, or an external-facing focus, or both, that it fits really well, that it takes a whole village to make sure it's right. But again, that whole mission, or values, strategies, whatever they are, they really have to have a good intent. And without that, then there's really no point to proceed and move forward. So hopefully, that's what I can help facilitate for your board here in Calaveras, and we'll get to, we'll get to a good place. Did I press the wrong button or something?
Yeah, but I can see.
No, it's off. On my phone. Well, I would tell you that I always need good feedback, so that's perfect. All right. So I just have a few tidbits for the board today, and anyone else in administration, and those maybe that are listening online, to give you an idea of where we're at today and sort of the next steps. So as you can see, there it is. So as you can see there in the first slide, working on our strategic planning effort. So some initial steps that we took, we took the opportunity to gather a bunch of strategic planning documents that are currently in existence here in the county, and Krista was nice enough to go over all of those with me in detail, what was adopted or put in front of the board, what was not adopted, and some next steps that had been talked about. But for the most part, relatively short, and nothing really set in concrete, if you will, is what I had reviewed. However, I think there's some good starting points there with what has been put forward in the past. But again, we'll be working with everyone to make sure that those are up to date, and it's truly what the county has evolved to today. Maybe the same, maybe a little bit different, maybe a lot different. So then, in order to get a good sense of where the county, the state of the county, if you will, related to its organization and moving forward, one of the things that I think is critical is doing a climate assessment. And just taking a temperature, if you will, of the organization from the elected leaders, definitely ones that are present today, but also the ones that hold the department head roles as well, and your appointed officials, and then a few other folks, as you can see on the list there. So went through and interviewed those folks, including all of you, asked a few basic questions of what your understanding was of the organization today, and what's your understanding of what strategic planning should be as we go along this journey, if you will. But a lot of good information, and I can report to your board that not one of your staff members, not one of your colleagues, cut the interview short and said, "That'll be enough of that, don't want to participate." Everybody was engaged. So Jack got up and left after about 10 minutes, but I had him come back, so. But it was, yeah, it was from all the supervisors that are here, obviously, and administration, the stage was set really well for me to get just incredible feedback from your folks. And that was over roughly a three-day period where we were able to get that information, assemble it. And what the process is, and what I like doing, is there's a lot that's said in interviews that maybe could last a half hour, 45 minutes, or an hour, or sometimes an hour and a half. And I feel very strongly that it's good to pull out the common themes. You can see where some of that synergy currently exists today throughout the organization. And there were some one-offs that are included in the summary that I have had a chance to prepare and went over with your county administrator, and I'll also be talking with Supervisor Gueramendi and Supervisor, Supervisor Fohlendorf. I believe you're staying on the Strategic Planning Committee, I'm guessing?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So I'll be working with that committee as well. And in those results, I can tell you, well, without, I want to respect the committee's process as well, but one of the questions that I posed to board members, administration, and all those interviewed actually, is what's going well? And I can tell you that the common themes that I pulled out is that departments do work well together, and there are good working relationships. You like those things to evolve over time into good partnerships, right? The working relationships are great, then they sort of evolve into good partnerships, and that's what really makes an organization chug at the end of the day. But there's a general sense of accomplishment and a good feeling of the sense of work when department heads do come together, and they work on projects, et cetera. What it lacked a little bit was, what I had heard, not much of a sense of celebrating those accomplishments in a, maybe in a grander way. Very positive attitude among department heads and employees, and I picked that up really well. And kudos to your board. A lot of comments about the stability of this board. And not everything's perfect, and not everything's painted as a rosy picture, but you've got a good army of folks behind you here in Calaveras, and harnessing those folks is going to be key to success. And I think one of the things that came up, that I will just let your board marinate on this a little bit, and they remarked, and one of the common things is, again, this was said by several, including some of the board members, is that while collaboration with the board of supervisors exist, that there needs to be more of it. And that was a desire that I received from department heads and others that I interviewed, and also members of your board, is that they would like to see that working relationship grow and evolve into the partnership. Anyway, just a few tidbits from the interview process. So, next steps. So be meeting very soon with the committee that we spoke of earlier, and I've met with them, I believe, a couple times so far, Krista? And this will be another one, and we'll discuss timeline, and say, okay, this, everything fits, got the holidays, and whatever big items that you folks might have coming up here in Calaveras, we'll make sure we work in concert with those. But we'll be working on that timeline, and then we'll do a little bit more comprehensive review of existing strategic planning documents, not only the ones that are in existence here in Calaveras, but also ones that are similar that maybe identify some best practices. Not word-for-word type of exercises, but looking at those best practices. So one of the things that we've talked about recently is to make sure everybody is on the same page, that there's a good understanding of what the strategic planning outcome or outcomes would be, if you will, and that is to get folks to work together. And that is a little retreat with the board that's been tentatively scheduled, and then also retreat with your department heads. In addition to that, in talking with Krista, be coordinating, hopefully, we'll ask for permission, forgiveness, all that other good stuff from the committee, is having not only the committee, which I think is a great place to discuss sort of those next steps and those overarching goals and objectives, but also to involve other folks in the process and have a working group. Because truly, the ownership in a strategic plan is not owned by one group. It's not owned by a couple of groups. It shouldn't be owned by everyone within your organization. And so having that input from those folks is going to be key. So one of the recommendations that we'll talk about is having a working group, fairly small, but a working group that can then take to the committee, recommendations, next steps, how do things look, how are things progressing, et cetera, and receive direction from that committee to the working group. So and then we'll also talk about, circling back with the committee, is stakeholder input. You know, in every county, and I think every organization, it's a little bit different. Like I explained earlier, some of the, on occasion, some of the discussions can be inward-facing, and they said, hey, let's start our plan off, and so we have a good set of strategies for our organization that we can achieve. Some say, well, hey, let's get, you know, what the county, countywide, basically, feels like we should be focusing in on. And then it's a combination of both. Some organizations do a little bit of each. But we'll work through those things, and we'll talk about how that goes. Stakeholder input can be accomplished through a variety of things, whether they're town halls, which has been just a skosh difficult over the last couple of years, unless they're virtual. But there's also really successful, I just did one recently, on surveys. And so put a very good, concise survey together for the public, and then do a webinar that accompanies that survey, open it up, and in one county, we had a tremendous response. It was really good, but we advertised it on social media, put it up on the website, and worked out really well. But those are things that we'll be talking about, and there's other mechanisms, too, to receive that stakeholder input. But that really is the basis of my presentation for today. Just wanted to get a few notes in front of the board of supervisors, keep in constant communication with Krista, she keeps me focused, and so I'm doing what the board expects, and of course, what Krista administration expects. But I also would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to your board members. It is just not the case in every county that all of you were very willing to sit down and give me so much of your time to talk about progressing the strategic plan, and also doing some great things, or hearing some great things from your county that really helps me, as I go through this process, shape those next steps. So I want to say thank you, and for making all of your, your staff available, too.
Thank you, Mr. Bendorf. Is there any board questions or at this time? Or Ms. Callaway?
The retreat for department heads and board, is it a two retreats, or one retreat combined, department heads and board?
You know, it's done a little bit both. I mean, some, there's one, they do one retreat, it can be a little bit co-mile, especially with counties, because you have elected officials, you know, that our department has, and you have the appointed officials, and then the board members. And so it can get a little wonky, but I've also seen it work well together, too. I don't know if I necessarily have a preference. What I'm used to is having the department heads together first, because it really encompasses that operational perspective supervisor, and then having the board, it encompasses that 30,000-foot level, which is really valuable to compare and contrast the two, and then marry them together.
So what's the objective of the retreat?
The objective is to talk a little bit about leadership, sort of governance, that there's a common understanding of how these things work, and how the product is delivered, and how it is championed. And then there's, a majority of it is how we develop priorities. So there are so many schools of thought, Supervisor Callaway, on, is it one priority? Is it three priorities? Is it five priorities? Is it 10? And really, a good understanding of those options available to folks, and what they may think they believe it should be, but really, the core underpinnings of strategic planning. Understand it first, provide some input, and then off we go.
So what I hear you saying sounds like it's really based on what the building blocks are of your strategic plan. And if we don't have a strategic plan yet, what are we going to be doing in a retreat?
Yeah, this is to build those blocks. So again, strategic planning comes in so many forms, that it's, I feel it's necessary, and part of my job, is to let the board know, but also let your executive team know, that hey, these are the basics when it comes to strategic planning. Now you can pick different options, you know, whatever type you want, from whatever shelf in the grocery store, or whatever's on the menu you'd like, as long as there's some synergy, certainly amongst the board first, because you folks are driving that, and then amongst department heads. And I think there are some misconceptions, Supervisor Callaway, of what a strategic plan does. I would submit to you that it's been my experience, that one of the misunderstandings is that it really is a guide of what we need to accomplish, but it's much more than that. It contains a set of values, or should contain a set of values, that are communicated throughout the organization, that provides sort of the day-to-day energy, synergy, in moving forward. But also, that it's a living, breathing document, too. Visiting at one time, I mean, obviously, this is the lengthy effort in building it, but visiting at one time's not appropriate. Strategies and priorities should be visited amongst the board and the executive team, and the entire organization on a more frequent basis. And again, having that direct interaction with department heads and board members, so everybody's working off the same sheet of music, is critical.
If I may, just to interject, so one of the things that I've heard from your board is that possibly to have some overlap where we discuss both with department heads and the board at the same time, and we're aware of that and working that into the process. So there will be that opportunity. Whether or not we choose to try and make that happen during the initial retreat is not yet clear, but we will certainly be, the whole point about this, just to put it a different way than, than Robert has, is for us all to come together and get on the same page. Clearly, your board being the ultimate policymaking body, but making sure that that is a two-way communication from department heads to your board and vice versa, so that the plan really does evolve as the work product of all of us involved, including the external stakeholders and, and our colleagues here.
Well, on the slide, you talked about the working group, but a picture was covering who's on the working group?
That's, that's yet to be determined. We have done a preliminary kind of assessment of who we think might be good candidates, but that's certainly something that has yet to be developed, and would happen, I mean, we could, there are different ways in which we could arrive at that list, but I think initially, what's being contemplated right now is to have that discussion with the strategic planning committee, and from that group, on the advice of working with Robert, the entire committee, which I'm a part, and obviously, two of your board members, as well as the tax collector and the auditor controller.
I mean, I really'd like possibly having a combined retreat with department heads. I just don't think we're ready for it yet as a county. I think it'd just be a little bit awkward. We need to move into that direction. I mentioned the word governance. I think that's important to be part of our strategic plan. I'm not sure what that looks like, though.
Yeah, you know, it could take a bunch of different forms. I could tell you for some counties, that governance has taken a completely different form and meaning, but I think where I come from, Supervisor Callaway, is that governance is a true building block, like you had mentioned earlier, with strategic planning. And there has to be coherence amongst the board somewhat in order for it to mean something and have that value. Some, some organizations may place quality governance as one of their values in a strategic plan as well, or it can be set as one of the building blocks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway.
Any further board questions or statements?
Ms. Fohlendorf.
I was just going to say thank you for coming today and giving the presentation, and Krista, working with the committee to get this to the board of supervisors today. We felt like it was important to give you guys an update of what we've been discussing at the committee level, and know what, basically what we know, and how far along this process is. We recognize that there's going to be not immediate answers, and that's part of the evolution of this, the strategic plan. It's intent is not really to make quick and reaction change, but talk through evolving not only as how the board governs, but just the organization as a whole, and what is the goal and vision of, of what we want the county to be like. And that is bringing in, when the time allows it, staff, both appointed and other elected heads, so we're all in it essentially together. So thank you for your guys' work on this and time.
I also want to say thank you. I look forward to the steps as we move forward. I'm optimistic personally that we can move forward with the strategic plan, and I look forward to working with staff and, and the county as a whole to find our direction. So thank you, Mr. Bendorf, for your time. Any further? Mr. Chairman?
I just add my voice to the chorus. I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad we're doing this. I think this is actually getting ready to be in the scary part of this. We're going to start putting stuff down on paper and seeing how it all matches, and that's a lot of exposure and a lot of vetting. So I think it's going to be, I would say, this is exciting slash scary part of the process. It's going, you know, we'll come out on the other side much better. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one last comment.
Absolutely, sir.
I know I thank the board already, but really, to the board and the department heads and administration, I kid you not, that it has been a really good experience. And I, there isn't one, one interview that went south, there isn't one piece of, or one directional item from the committee or the board or from administration that has seemed odd or contrary to accomplishing something as big as strategic planning. And it's just been, just a pleasure to, to work with all of you, get to know you a little bit, and also the, the organization as well. I just want to say thank you. Makes my job heck of a lot easier when that happens.
Well, someone must have fixed the water here, because that's extraordinary for Calaveras County. Thank you, thank you, sir. With that, if there's no further.
Should we take the gentleman's board?
Absolutely, Ms. Oh, public comment. I'm going to take a public comment real quick. Thank you, Mr. Toffinelli. It's been quite some time since I messed that one up. It's because I got my other sign in front of this one. Okay, public comment.
Do you guys know our bond public comment?
Doug, you got anything for this?
Rilling you in. You called me out, so I'm here. No, I just want to say that I've met with this individual, as every department head has, and I am familiar with these processes, I was involved in one a few years back. They're incredibly important, and they're incredibly helpful, and it feels like we're on the right track here. I'm very excited to be part of it, and so at any level, if this organization needs my assistance, or my input during this process, our department is standing by.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Well, you have a good day, Mr. Bendorf. We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Two minutes, Ms. Callaway. Just two, not three? We'll move to item 24, informational item, administrative office. Receive an update regarding American Rescue Plan Act funding. Ms. Krista Von Latta.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. Krista Von Latta from the administrative office. I wanted to give you a brief update on the American Rescue Plan Act funding that I know you are all aware was awarded to the county this past spring. We did, in fact, receive an allocation direct from the federal government, and roughly the amount of $8.9 million. We received the first 50% of that allocation in October of this year, and anticipate receiving the second installment in the same amount approximately, let's just say, fall of next year. So when we originally did our assessment of the funding and the allowable uses, the most, the broadest allowable use is where you can demonstrate, where we can demonstrate revenue loss. And so having since done that calculation and take that deep dive, we believe that we can, in fact, justify that revenue loss in the entire amount of 8.9 million. As a parallel issue, there is a bill that...
Did you say we could?
We can't.
We can.
Can. Yes.
Yes, we can.
Indeed. So kind of on a parallel but related course, there is legislation that originated in the Senate, and I want to say, yeah, it was October, it passed by unanimous consent on the same day, and it is a more flexible plan than ARPA that is intended to further broaden the scope of allowable uses for ARPA funding. However, given that one of the allowable uses even... However, given that one of the allowable uses even under the original act is for where there's lost revenue, to be able to use that last revenue for governmental services. And by virtue of doing that, then that very clearly broadens where we might be able to spend those funds. So, for example, safety is an allowable use, so we could be looking back at all of our safety-related activities and backfilling our lost revenue on the basis of those activities to then free up those funds to use in other ways. We also could use them prospectively, or going forward rather, in terms of other safety-related activities. So, further to board discussion on what I hear from you today, what I'm really here to propose, bringing back to your board after the first of the year, are recommendations for capital projects. We know that we have had, for example, Animal Services and a district attorney building slated to be completed for some time now. We are aware of at least one other safety-related project that should be addressed at some point in the reasonably near future. There are some additional items that we could look at incorporating into those existing priorities that the board has set forward in the last couple of years. And the overall general recommendation of mine is that we take this as an opportunity to do some large-scale projects that will carry the county forward. We address some of the infrastructure needs that we've been aware of for, in the case of Animal Services, more than two decades, and actually for your board to direct me to come back with those recommendations after the first of the year. While I am not opposed, and it is certainly within your policymaking decision to direct me to come back with other types of recommendations as well, I'm quite happy to do that. However, my recommendation is to focus on two or three large-scale projects and look at other ongoing or other one-time funding sources for some of the other initiatives that you might like to achieve. That said, that is completely within your purview to make those decisions and give me direction, and I look forward to hearing your feedback here.
Thank you, Ms. Von Latta. I'll start out with public comment, and I'll bring it back to the board.
There is no online public comment.
Excellent, thank you.
Any questions or statements by board members?
I'll go first. If I seem to be going first this meeting. I totally, totally support the idea of large capital, the large capital projects. I mean, this is an opportunity we've never had, and we're always looking for ways, how are we going to fund the DA's office? We can all go in there and jump up and down, and the floor falls. And we've talked about it for years, since we moved them from here to their trailer. And to do something for them, and of course, my favorite, Animal Services, that we will not have this opportunity for, if ever again. And then it's something that the county can use for many years going forward. I mean, we can whittle it away on little feel-good things, but I think we need to, I would like us to support making a commitment to the large projects that you recommended, large capital projects. Let's, less money we have to borrow, less money we have to figure out how we're going to pay for it, oh, let's put it off another year, and here we are, five years down the road, and there's nothing. Thank you.
If we can call it the Callaway Building.
You can call Animal Services that. I'd be honored.
I concur with Ms. Callaway. Big feel-good things, not little ones. And one-time expenditures, one-time funds. You know, what that looks like when we get to it, you know, we'll see that when it comes back before us, so it'll be a time for a debate on which big feel-good things those are.
If I may, and I was remiss in my introduction not to mention this, but when Robert and I spoke last week and had our debrief over strategic planning, one of the themes that came, not just from the board, but also from department heads, was the need for us to address large-scale infrastructure as a county. And I think that from every possible perspective, but not least of which, would be making our staff and our colleagues and our department heads and the clients that we all serve, your constituents, see us building something for the county and them, and the pride that comes with that, and the ability to watch that progress will be hugely important for morale, and I think that will have a lot of cascading positive effects that we'll see over time.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Guerra Mendy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Krista. I agree with Ms. Callaway and Mr. Stoppa that, you know, this is a one-time thing. We may never have this kind of opportunity again. I would like to, and I support things like taking on Animal Services, the DA Building, things that have been on the list far longer than I've been on this board. I would also think that we ought to add to the list for discussion, things like setting aside a certain amount of revenue for internet for our county. We don't know what that's going to be. We know there's all this federal. My guess is that there's going to be some match required at some point, and if we don't use it, we can always deal back in. But one of the things I want to talk about is, you know, this has been a public health crisis that we've all gone through. I think we have to include Public Health and Health and Human Services at this time. We've got a small chunk of money relative to their needs, but it's a good down payment. And I think we need to start thinking about how we can house them adequately. They are the ones who carried a lot of us through this, and we have to recognize that they're not going to be the last battle we're going to have to fight.
Supervisor Guerra Mendy, I could not agree with you more. I will say that on a related track, we are looking into specific recommendations for Health and Human Services, to the extent to which we might want to have that conversation at the same time. We have set the groundwork so that we can have the discussions we need to have with consultants in order to see what that might look like. So, that is certainly something that we are considering and that we'll bring back to your board so that you can actually take a full look. But I want to be really clear, and I want to give, that that conversation, at least so far as it's been contemplated at the admin level, is one that is more or less construed to be a separate standalone project, and there are a lot of reasons for that that I'm not yet prepared to discuss, but that are related to funding and the vehicle that we may use in order to have that in place to get that project accomplished.
I just want to get it in front of this board as a possible future capital project.
Yes, absolutely.
And this may not be the right vehicle, but, you know, I have to admit that it really bothered me that with all these billions of dollars from the state, we're not rebuilding our public health departments physically or staff-wise. It's like it didn't happen, and I feel for them.
Ms. Bollendorf.
When we're talking about infrastructure, are we also keeping in mind technology, infrastructure, and expanding accessibility in terms of one-time cost to get things up-to-date where the public can easier access or pay bills online? I'm thinking as simple as dog tags, you know, and just some of the small things that to update and make employees' jobs easier and make the public feel that they have the access to get some of these things done, rather than having to worry about coming into the facilities to get things, even for plans, like uploading plans and that in the background. I know there's cost, revolving costs going forward, but the initial setup, I mean, if anything's taught us this last couple of years, is just the access and the lack of infrastructure and accessibility to government from the public. I know we still need the broadband issue, but I'd like to make sure that that's also in the back of the mind of when we're talking infrastructure, it's just not concrete. There's a lot of other infrastructure that goes under there, and not the millennial in me, so.
No, I mean, your point is well-made. You know, I think the first step there, and this is certainly something that I imagine we'll be speaking about in connection with the strategic plan and generally just outside of it in terms of government operations, but we have many of those initiatives already in place that are not fully deployed, but that are there. So, I think the first step would be to take a true assessment of and see where we have opportunities and what's the low-hanging fruit. We know, for example, that Trakit has been largely implemented, but there are still departments that have not yet on-boarded that technology. So, I definitely agree that there's opportunity there, and it's up to your board to, you know, determine how much time or how much of the funding you'd like to potentially allocate to that.
Mr. Toffenelli.
Well, I think all the projects that were mentioned are all good projects. I think, you know, the animal shelter and the DA's building, Marita's correct, has been on for a long time, and it certainly needs to be dealt with. It'd be nice that we have some money to do it. However, there are so many projects that are in the same area that's been brought up, but we have another issue that I think needs to be talked about and thrown in, and the amount of cost, I don't know at this time. Patrick is supposed to be getting somewhat of a handle on it, but it's been a longstanding issue since it's opened, is the jail. And to rectify the problems with that jail, we're talking about flooding that annually happens, and I'm sure it happened over the course of the weekend and yesterday with the amount of rain we had. We have officers in there and inmates in there working in, on floors that are flooded, and sooner or later, we may have a major incident in there that we've known about, and it kind of opens ourselves up a little bit. So, I think we really need to put that into the mix, too, as soon as we find out how much it's going to cost to rectify the issues that we have there. I mean, that money could be recovered at some point, if it's not too long down the line, through some suits that could go on with the contractor, but it's another major issue that we keep talking about, but it doesn't get done. So, I think we need to also think about that and at least talk about it going forward. But the DA's office and the animal shelter and broadband and the other projects that are brought up, certainly we could do. And I wanted to just bring up one other issue that, we're talking about infrastructure, and it depends on the board whether it wants to talk about it or not, but it's a major safety issue as far as evacuations, and it's something that, again, has been a long time in the county. That's the wagon trail project. We funded phase one of it, but we have a phase two coming that we need $4.5 million to get the plans ready, for shovel-ready, so we can ask for funds. Until we have that done, we can't go to the state or federal governments and ask for money, because we don't basically have a project funded. But once that highway opens up completely, we have a straight run to Alpine County from our end of the county down here with a nice updated road. It's going to bring many people into our county, which could increase the tax dollars tremendously, just about now, because people avoid it. They don't go skiing up the Bear Valley because of the dangerous roads that we have between Copper and Angel's Camp. We've improved both sides of it, but this needs to be done, and obviously, phase one, we're funding going forward. But it just needs, I think, to be in the mix to talk about, because it is another longstanding project. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Any further board questions or comments? Krista, anything further?
Hmm.
All right, you got your notes?
Got my notes.
Very good. Supervisors, announcements. In compliance with Government Code 532323, Point 3D, board members shall make, provide beef, excuse me, provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. Ms. Callaway, since you're used to going first today.
Hi.
Mic, please. Sorry.
I'd just like to remind all of you about, we have a Christmas Day, free Christmas Day dinner for the community. We'll be doing pickup in San Andreas at Treats, Native Sons in Murphy's, and dine-in at the Native Sons, and we also deliver anywhere in the county. So, if you have any, it's a community dinner, and welcome your participation or any of And NAMI is having a opening, an invitation, on the 29th of December. So, at least one or two of us can go. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Mr. Guerra Mendy.
Thank you very much. Nothing to report, but I do want to, Mr. Chair, this is your first, this is your last full meeting. Good job this year. I'd like to wish my colleagues a good year and a happy new year and happy, Merry Christmas to everybody, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Ms... Thank you, Mr. Guerra Mendy. I want to wish staff, the public, the fellow supervisors a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. You know, for many of these are hard times. You know, I just want everyone to think of your family, hold them close, let them know how much you care, get over past trials and tribulations. It's an important time. We need to support all our family as much as possible, and I wish everyone the best. Thank you.
Mr. Toffenelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I echo your sentiments, and Merry Christmas to everybody and staff. Hopefully, going forward, we have a great, as good a year next year as we had this year. I echo Jack's sentiments about how well the board worked together this year and a good year that we had. Doesn't happen that often, and we will have the same board next year, so I look forward to the projects and things that we get accomplished next year. I want to bring up, I have a Mountain Valley EMS, very important meeting this Thursday at 10:00 a.m. Again, we have Stanislaus County withdrawing from that JPA. They're a major stakeholder in it. The other four counties are rural counties, Alpine, Mariposa, Amador, and Calaveras. We're getting close to the time where they're going to be pulling out, and this will be a planning meeting to plan on that exit and going forward. We'll have, June 30th is their exit date, so we have a short six-month time period to get everything on track. So, it will be a planning meeting on Thursday. I will report on the 11th on that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Ms. Bollendorf.
Echo what everyone else has said about Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thanks for making this first year for me easy. I appreciate each and every one of you helping me through. This last week, Supervisor Toffenelli and I attended the Eastside GSA meeting, and we will be bringing back, hopefully, in... we will be bringing back, hopefully, and sooner than later in the next year, a report back to the board of supervisors regarding the GSA, and that's all I have.
Thank you. See y'all next year. Some of you sooner.